Welcome back to the Select Board Meeting of October 8, 2024. I apologize to be a little bit late. We had a longer-than-expected executive session tonight. But with that in mind, we'll start the meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance. Start by John.
My pledge allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, ungod, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So first, under open forum, a thank you to Sue Hanley for 17 years of service on the Board of Health, which is the sort of minimal thing I can say tonight. Because, first of all, just that Board of Health service time includes the COVID years with all kinds of meetings, standards, listening to national state directives, dealing with how citizens didn't want to heal. Here are those state and town directives. And there's a huge stress at a time when we've sort of forgotten what it was like, especially those first few months of COVID. The fear that was in people's minds, it's been, I think, we've forgotten, but the Board of Health was the head of the spear of that one. So thank you for leading at a very difficult time. But apart from the Board of Health, if you follow Facebook, you've seen Sue gathering water and other incidentals for families that need that. You probably did not know that she was behind the scenes raising money to meet the town's commitments for mental health counseling for several years. And of course, as Tom and I were on the school and city task force, Sue was part of that, helping us understand mental health issues, safety issues in schools. So, you know, great asset to the town beyond just the Board of Health. So my heartfelt thanks. I'm not sure if anyone was on the Board of Health tonight to speak to this. If I don't, Andrea probably has a few things she'd say, too.
Absolutely. Certainly want to thank Sue and acknowledge all of her years of service here to the town. In addition to everything that Scott said, Sue was a school nurse at Stony Brook for over 20 years and was an absolute advocate for social and emotional learning long, long before it became a priority in our school system. Sue's focus was always on the student, and she was passionate about making sure that their needs were met, whether those needs were physical, emotional, or otherwise. In addition, what you didn't mention, I just believe Sue was also, I don't know if it's called chair, manager, but leader of the Westford Youth Basketball League for...
President.
President. Thank you. Okay. President of the Westford Youth Basketball Association for many, many years, encouraging kids also just to get out there, be active, and be physical. So her compassion, her passion, her commitment to this town has been just tremendous in the 28 years that she lives here, has lived here. And on a personal level, she lived in my neighborhood across the street from me, and I am going to miss her and Ken and their dogs terribly. But thank you so much for all of your work here and for your complete devotion and commitment to Westford. You will be missed. Thank you, Sue. (APPLAUSE).
And maybe Sue's life, I remember serving with Ken on the Community Preservation Committee because you were in rec for a number of years. So we're going to miss you, too.
Thank you.
Can I say just a few words?
Oh, yes, please.
First of all, thank you for inviting me here tonight and to honor me, and I really appreciate it. We've been here 29 years, actually, yeah. And I want people to know we're leaving not, I'm not quitting the board, I'm actually being fired from the board because we're moving. And it's with very much mixed emotions that we are leaving this town that has been very important to Ken and I. We have four children. When I started on the board, they were like 20, 19, 17, and 12. They are now 28, 33, 35, and 36. And Ken and I have six grandchildren, and five of the six live in the Boston area. So we are moving closer to them. I will tell you, I have loved being on the board. We've certainly gone through our share: asphalt plant, Merrill Quarry. I mean, we remember all these different things, and of course, of course, COVID, which I have to say was probably the most painful time for me in this town and on the board because I was just blown away by people's treatment, you know? And the only thing I've ever done in this town is, or what I've strived to do, is to do what's best for the town. It's never, ever, ever been about me. And I think that's what was so painful during COVID, was there was a lot of misinformation and people that truly were unkind about what we were trying to do to keep this town safe. So I will miss being part of this. I think my favorite part about being on the Board of Health was when we worked together. So I loved being on those task forces. And, you know, I pray going forward that you continue to find ways to collaborate with all boards because we're all better off if we can all work together for this town. So thank you for having me here tonight, and thank you for honoring me, and I really appreciate it.
Thank you, Sue.
Thank you.
I think I say it, but anything else from open forum? Because I hate to lose the note.
I have two very minor things that are nothing to Sue's service, so thank you for your service. But if any other board members have anything different...
I'd say one thing. I think Marilyn Franks' last day working in the town clerk office is tomorrow.
Correct. Yes, she's retiring tomorrow.
Well, she's been a stalwart in the town clerk's office for the 20 years I've been messing around with the boards here, so.
We'll have her here, don't worry.
Oh, yeah, she's done a great job. I think we ought to have a appreciation for her.
It's her second retirement.
Oh, second.
She probably retired as a schoolteacher, so.
That's right.
Kristin?
Again, as I said, very minor compared to the congratulations of Sue. Just want to remind the people in the room and residents who might be watching, we do have a special town meeting coming up on October 21, which we'll be discussing in greater detail towards the middle of the meeting. But we do have a survey up on our website right now. Please answer that if you do plan to attend town meeting. We are planning for quite a hefty crowd, but we do better when we know what the numbers are. So please respond to that within the next week. And then we also launched yesterday a survey related to environmental sustainability. So through our strategic planning efforts, we did ask some questions related to environmental sustainability. The Select Board is working with NIMCOG, our regional planning agency, to gather more information related to sustainability with the Clean Energy and Sustainability Committee and the help of Mike Edwards and other staff. So we urge you to participate in that survey and tell us what you think and give us some ideas, and we'll be using that in the near future for additional use. So two minor things. Thank you.
Anything else from the audience?
Audience?
Yes, Andrea?
Yes, also, just for the audience, on Monday, October 14, the town is going to be celebrating Indigenous Peoples' Day on the town common from 10 to 11.
I was waiting for Wendy to get up for that one, so I'm glad you covered it.
I see your... Thank you.
So speaking of that, we have the Consent Agenda at 7:05, which is first for a, two special licenses. One, Oktoberfest, October 12, 2024, as requested by Sandra Habe. Time is 3 to 7 p.m. at Good Pickin' Farm at 5 and 6 Gould Road. The second is the Monster Mash Farm Bash, also requested by Sandra Habe at Good Pickin' Farm, October 26, from 5:30 to 8:30 p.m. And then we also have a common bandstand request, a Sandwich Board to recognize Italian Heritage Month. Requester is Wendy Galoid from the DEI Committee, and that will be October 13 through 31, which is, the request is coming to us because it's beyond the five-day window that we would only have for Sandwich Board. So with that in mind, there is a motion to approve?
So moved.
Is there another public...
Along with public, consistent with public safety comments.
And drive us a second, so.
Scott Ellen is coming to the microphone.
Oh, I'm sorry, okay.
This has to do with a Sandwich Board request.
Okay.
You may recall that, lo, many years ago, it was the Common Restoration Commission who worked with this board to come up with the signed policy. And it says Sandwich Boards will only be on the common for five days. This is for two weeks. And this actually is longer than Wendy's application asked for, it asked for it to be there from the 14th to the 28th. This is for the 13th to the 31st. I don't oppose anything Wendy is doing, but I do ask, under what standards, the Select Board is deciding that the signed policy shouldn't have an exception made to it? And when you do that, and why? I think it's time to discuss that. Wendy didn't know that there was a five-day limitation. So I think perhaps when people apply to your office for a Sandwich Board, they should be given the policy because there are regulations about where on the common it could go. So I think there's been a little breakdown here, perhaps, because it's been a long time. But I would ask that that be rebooted, perhaps, and that applicants know what the guidelines are, and that the Select Board have a little discussion about when an exception should be made and why. I thank you for that.
Okay. I have my own thoughts, but Kristin?
Sure, just to clarify the situation. So Wendy did submit a Sandwich Board request signed to our office. I reviewed it with Pam McNiff. It was longer for the five days, so we did not sign off on it right away. It is traditional, if it's for five days or under, the town manager has discretion to sign off on it. So we did go back to Wendy and say that this is for more than five days. We're actually going to put it on the Select Board agenda. It's not under my discretion to sign off on that, so it's your discretion at that point in time. So perhaps Wendy was not knowledgeable at first, but we have educated her related to that signed board request related to the five-day maximum.
Wendy Galoid, 16 Pleasant Street. I did not real, I knew it was, since it was celebrating a month, it was outside of the typical five-day, but I didn't realize that it is a precedent, possible precedent setter. So I don't want to cause any disruption. I am fine with a five-day window if that is what the Select Board decides that is comfortable. So if you have any questions?
Questions? No. No, thanks.
Okay.
I mean, my personal opinion is that, actually, I appreciate what I think is a nice gesture on the part of the DEI Committee to recognize Italian Heritage Month, given the issues around Columbus Day. I think it's, you know, a very positive outreach. And so, to my opinion, if we're going to bend rules and extend windows in a spirit of community unity, that's a good reason to do it. But that's just my opinion, so. Anybody else?
No, I would agree with you.
I have just a question. I mean, so if somebody does, to come forward with three five-day applications, right, essentially, would we have to have any word in that, or would you just say yes?
So in the past, we can use the L. Harvey rollout, for example. The recycling commission came with three weeks of signboards, and we actually had them, take them down in certain periods and put them back up because we also have a limitation of the number of signboards that are out there. So we not only take into account the length of the time someone wants a signboard out there, but also the other signboards that have received approval. So in the past, we have asked people to stagger when they go in and out because sometimes it gets stale as well, when it's out there for the entire time.
I think that's a great point. So that was sort of, I was sort of thinking, you do five and then take it down for a bit and then do another five towards the end of the month. So that was where I was kind of...
Tom?
Yeah, so I guess a similar point. If other folks have observed that rule as a constraint, and the way they've moved forward is by putting it up and working it down and taking them down for certain periods to balance the sign load, unless there was an exceptional reason that this needed something, and I think we'd be willing to hear that exception, it would make sense to me that we, just because if other folks have asked and been told no and have changed their plans to do this, it makes sense to me to stick with the norm.
Wendy?
Is it okay for me?
Yeah, oh, yes.
So basically, the DEI Committee is working to elicit a wider, a voice from a wider selection of the community, Westford community. We have heard a lot from a few folks, and we hear a lot from them continually. But we are doing a campaign this month, which has already elicited positive input from other Italian-American heritage members of the community. So it is helping us to find a wider group of folks who can weigh in and help us work on a path forward. So that, I hope that helps set a context for why the extension might be considered.
I'm going to break this in two. So first, let's, we have, let's do this. Can I get a motion to approve the two special license items? So moved. A second, is there a second? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, now, since we may have unity here, is there a motion to approve the request as made, or is there a desire to amend that request?
I'll move the request as made.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay. Thank you. Next, we have a public hearing for approval of a Mass General Law, Section 38, sorry, Chapter 38, Section 12 Beer and Wine Restaurant License for Nance Kitchen located at 160 Littleton Road. So is there a motion to open the public hearing?
So moved.
Is there a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Is there someone here to speak for Nance Kitchen? Or an attorney?
I don't see Jordan Mackey online. If someone is online to speak for Nance Kitchen, would you raise your hand and I can promote you to a panelist?
Oh, wait, do we know if all the paperwork is in order?
By understanding it, that is, it is in order, yes.
Usually we ask Patty, but she's graduated, so.
Thanks. But tonight I looked at it. Because the last time I got asked, too. I mean, it's, it seems pretty much in order.
Okay.
Where is Nance Kitchen going? 160 Littleton Road, is that where?
It's the Dunkin' Donuts in the Middlesex Savings Bank.
Right. Is it a different, or is it taking over for somebody?
It's taking over the old Papa Gino's.
Okay. Yep.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
I move to close the public hearing.
Yes.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Welcome, Nance Kitchen. Actually, I did see the advertising, looks like a great place to visit, so welcome to Westford. Next, we have a public hearing for National Grid, job number 26029111, to locate, to relocate eight JO poles on Dunstable Road, beginning at a point approximately 626 feet north of the center line of the intersection of Olive Road and continuing approximately 704 feet, approximately 704 feet, in other direction. National Grid proposes to move P-42-10 south, move P-43-10 north, move P-44-33 south, move P-45 west across the street, and so on. But you can search the map. I think what they're doing, I don't think they need to read the whole, the whole article. Is anyone here from National Grid to speak to this?
Yes.
Is it Dave or Eric?
Did we open the public hearing?
Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you, yes.
I moved to open the public hearing.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Sorry, thank you, Mr., you should be a clerk, Dan, Andrea.
Sorry, I'm dropping a ball.
So we have David Boucher and Eric Fontaine from National Grid on the line.
So, I guess, you know, we have the map in front of us. Hopefully you can see that, see that, too. Just want to speak briefly to the hows, the whys, and the whens.
Good evening, David Boucher, Senior Designer, National Grid, 1101 Trentpike Street, North Handover. I'd like to defer to my friend Eric Fontaine, who is also here. He's the designing engineer for the project. He might be able to give you answers that are a little bit more specific. Eric?
Good evening. My name is Eric Fontaine. I work for Parliament, and I'm as a project lead, and I'll be representing the National Grid tonight. Just a quick little summary of the project. We'll be upgrading the structures on Dunstable Road by changing the over-open wire crossarm hotel construction to a spacer cable configuration, which will then greatly improve the reliability against fallen trees and tree branches along that. So better service during tough times in the storms. So, and along with that, we'll be replacing the poles and transformers and all the equipment along that path as well. So just a quick little summary there.
Thanks. And will this involve any power being out for those residents?
No, they'll probably, most likely, be doing an overbuild. So they'll be trying to, our best is to try to minimize the outages. So building and overbuilding the existing structures, a common practice to have the line energized underneath the wall, building the new structure on top. So they'll minimize the outages, so.
Thanks. Andrea?
Did I read your plan right, that you were going to be removing four poles and replacing them with eight?
Yeah, so we'll relocate those four poles slightly, you know, from their original location, so that's why we are petitioning them. And then, of course, we're installing new poles. The downside about having spacer cable, that the cable is heavier, and so we need proper, adequate, you know, guy and supporting of those cables. But, you know, the plus side of having open wires, that you can have fewer poles, longer span, but not as protective against fallen trees and tree branches, stuff like that, so.
And our DPW department has looked at this and has signed off on the location of the poles?
They did have some comments in your packet.
Right.
Kyle, do you want to speak?
Yes.
Yes, please.
Eric, could I, could I chime in just for a second? I think what, when you're saying that we're going to remove four poles, that's removing the four poles that are moving several feet. When we relocate poles, we're also removing the poles.
No, I understand.
Isn't that correct? Eric?
Yes, that is correct.
No, I understand you're removing four poles and, that you're replacing, removing four poles and replacing those four poles, but you're also adding an additional four poles.
Correct, yes. I was trying to explain that with spacer cable, we need to add additional more poles to support the cable.
Right, I get it.
Kyle?
Yes, thank you. I did review this project last week and spoke with the original designer of the project, and he relayed my comments to these folks. They've agreed to incorporate them. The two comments were, pole 44 is being relocated 33 feet to the south, which will, would cause the service line to the house at 100 Dunstable Road to now cross their driveway. Grid has agreed to, I guess, I don't know their, their proper terminology, but they're going to suspend that service line where it is right now, so the location of the service line won't change. And then the other comment I made was asking to put the new pole sets minimum of three feet from the edge of pavement. Most of them are much closer now, presents a hazard to our plow trucks and to the traveling public in general. They've agreed to that as well.
When is this work scheduled to be done?
I do not know. We, there's still a little bit more permit environmental, stuff like that, I can't pinpoint when the project will start.
Can they start after November 15, Kyle?
They can.
They can?
Yeah. These kind of projects don't have any interference with the paved surface.
Okay. And I expect that you will notify all of the others along the way when the project is about to start?
Yes, Sue, we could, we could definitely accommodate that.
And do we think, given, given, how long do you think the work will take?
That is a hard question to answer, and a lot of things could happen, storms, you know, so I unfortunately do not have that answer, sorry.
Okay. And do we know whether or not, given this, given what sounds to me like, you know, a lot of work, moving four poles, relocating four poles, adding four poles, do we know if a police detail is going to be needed?
For sure, a detail would be needed.
Okay. So make sure you are arranged for police detail.
Of course.
I have a comment online after the board goes.
Any other comments on the board?
I have a comment, raised hand from Douglas Bell. I'm going to allow you to talk.
Yes, hello, I'm Douglas Bell. I live at 98 Dunstable Road. Just checking, can you hear?
Yes.
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, great. I, I live at, right about 443 is next to me, which is one of the relocated poles here. And there's been a lot of confusion. The same, this, by the way, was permitted five years ago, 2019 or 2020. This is just a re-up of the whole thing. And sadly, the same mistakes were made in that application, but the documents that were sent to me indicate 443 is to be moved to the south, which would put it right in the middle of my driveway. I've talked to National Grid, and they said, yeah, that was an error, and that they corrected it. And it does appear that it's corrected in the public hearing or the agenda that you have. But I just want to get confirmation from National Grid that 443 isn't going to move 10 feet to the north.
Yeah, we are aware of that, you know, that will not be installed in the driveway, you know, for sure.
We have ourself of the position that it's currently in.
Right, yes, that's correct, to what we go and not.
Second, is this, that will require likely, is that going to relocate the, my service lines when that pole is moved? And if so, who is responsible for that?
National Grid will be able to take care of the service line. They'll replace the under weather to the secondary, so they'll be in charge of that. The material intend to keep the, the service line intact by just having like a mid-spirit up.
I see. So both my files line and my, my power lines will remain at the same tap, same location and won't need to be replaced, but they no longer will connect to the pole, is that correct?
We actually call them to replace it, just to kind of give them the opportunity to, you know, adjust once they set the poles in, but, you know, they'll be keeping in the same line as there is now.
I see. So they might replace the materials, but they would not change the location? I'm sorry, I'm in a little trouble following you, Eric.
Yeah, no, I'm, I'm sorry if I'm not, but yeah, they'll replace the wire, the itself, but the, we intend to keep the same route that is heading to the house currently.
Okay. And the last question I have, and maybe you won't be able to answer, but the relocation of this pole will require a new anchor. Do they, do you have it, indicate what the distance from the pole the anchor will be set at?
Yeah, the anchor is set, should be 10 feet on the, on the pole.
10 feet into my, into my property, is that correct? No more than 10 feet?
Nope, that is correct, yep.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other comments? Okay, so I guess I'd like a motion to approve or not, but if, if to approve, subject to DPW comments, to make sure that those are in there.
I'll move to approve subject to DPW comments.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Dave and Eric, and look forward to working with you.
Thank you. Have a good night.
Thank you very much.
Next, we have a presentation. Thank you for your patience, Bill. Presentation on Special Time Meeting, Article 10. Bill Taufel's here. We've all seen the slides, but I think we've also got them loaded for the viewing public.
Thanks for having me here to speak today. I don't know how much I'll have to rely on the presentation. It's a pretty straightforward explanation, I think, of what, what this is all about. Today, as you know, a lot of the key decisions about the town are made by votes at town meeting, and the requirement is that people be present at those meetings in order to cast those votes. And that requirement actually excludes a lot of people who, for one reason or another, are not able to attend the town meeting. And you, as you probably know, for a long time have argued that people should be able to vote on warrant articles without having to attend the town meeting. And the purpose of this Article 10, this petition article, is to ask you folks, the Select Board, to work with our state representatives, Jimmar Ciero and John Cronin, to, essentially to get a bill into the legislature that would enable this town of Westford... to get a bill into the legislature that would enable the town of Westford to take that direction. This being, as you probably also know, it's an issue that can't be resolved at the town level, has to be resolved by the state, and there are a number of towns that are trying to work it with the state, but the intent of this article is to take some action on behalf of Westford to get that to occur. That pretty much summarizes the article, it just, by way of a little history, aside from the, the fact that I first made a presentation here on this in 2015, and the rationale is essentially the same, except there are more, more reasons. At the time of the last couple of town meetings, there was a lot of noise in the system, social media and so on, about town meeting and about going to it, and, and it just seemed like a good occasion to bring the, the possibility of voting without being at the town meeting up again. And I created a website to discuss and, and provide information on the topic to people, and in fairly short order, got over 100 people in town who subscribed to the website, which gave me a pretty good body of people to, to hold the discussion with. And when we got to making a petition, some of those people participated in going out and getting, as you know, you need 100 signatures to get a citizen petition on a special town meeting, so some of the people on that list participated. And also, just as a reflection, I think, of the interest that there is in this idea, my wife was in the back, and I spent one afternoon, a few hours in front of Market Basket, collecting signatures, and in, in about two, three hours, we collected 50 signatures between the two of us. So it was not a difficult thing to mobilize enough interest to get this on the agenda. So it's my, and you may also recall, I, when I first brought this up, I asked if the Select Board would be interested in putting such a, an article on the warrant themselves, and that didn't seem to be the case, so, so I, I took this other route. And so, you know, I'd be happy to go into rationale for why I think this is a good idea and so on, but, but I'd really be more interested to hear what questions you folks might have about it. Because naturally, I plan to make a presentation at the special town meeting and see what the voters at that meeting think.
Okay, up to the board.
Can we put the article itself up on the screen?
That would be great.
The petition?
Yeah, the petition, can you?
Sure, yep. So, so if you go back to the warrant, Mike, on the original town, special town meeting page, webpage.
Do you want to look at the presentation?
No, no, no.
No, I want the wording of your petition.
The wording of the article.
The article, yeah. It's on the warrant.
Scott, while we're waiting, can I ask Bill a question?
Yep, sure.
So, Bill, thank you very much for putting this together and doing all the work and, you know, surfacing this topic yet again. Just curious, personally, how, how long do you think, you know, people should have to wait before this is enacted? Because there's, you know, both routes that are being proposed here require a lot of work, and there's technical challenges and other logistical issues. So, you know, are you getting the feeling that people would, you know, expect to see this approved at town meeting, and then next year, all right, we're, we're voting remotely, or are you setting expectations such that this is going to be a little bit of a longer slog?
Well, I can answer that in two ways. First of all, there's two alternatives that are proposed in this article, neither one is meant to be set in stone, it's, they're just directional, and I'm not sure that there are other alternatives, but the two alternatives that, that I mentioned in this article are, are, one is having the town meeting as usual, but actually holding the vote on the articles in the subsequent meeting at the poll, a subsequent vote at the poll. And the other one is to have a hybrid town meeting where people could vote remotely. I think, between the two of those, I think technically to implement, I think the first one would be much easier and could be implemented a lot faster, with, you know, without a lot of effort, and without a lot of cost. So, just from that perspective, I, I, I think that would be a more expedient way, way to go about it. As far as getting something through the state, that is a difficult proposition. And I know that the town of Wayland has had a, a bill in for, I think it's now in the second two-year session, I have been completely unable to find out the status of that bill. There are countless bills in the legislature about modernizing town meeting, and it is actually impossible to find out if anything is happening on them at all, let alone, you know, what's going on. So, I, I'm not a fan of giving up on the possibility of getting the state to act, so I, I kind of feel like, well, you know, we, we shouldn't just accept that it takes forever to get something done at the state level, you know, we should work on it. And if nothing else, at least add our voice to the clamor so that people at the state level recognize that this is something to be dealt with. The other point on it is that some number of weeks ago, Jim R. Sierra and John Cronin joined this meeting remotely by Zoom, and the question came up, I don't remember exactly what it was, I think it was, I think maybe Angela brought it up, relative to the difficulty of even finding a site where you could fit as many people as may want to come to a town meeting. And their response was that, well, the town needs to put together what they want and bring it to us, you know, and then we can work on it. So it seemed like this would be a step in that direction, putting together what the town wants to do and getting those people as our representatives to work on it at the state level, which is actually their job.
Thank you.
So, again, thank you, Bill, for coming tonight and explaining this, along the line of maybe what Chris was getting at, maybe we can work together in advance of the presentation so we're giving a realistic understanding to the people voting on this, what the timeframe is, what the steps are likely to be, what the concern would be, if, if it's sort of a simplistic view of this, people may leave feeling like, well, we voted to be able to do this remotely, why do I have to come to town meeting anymore? I wouldn't want democracy as it's going to exist for several years at least, to be affected negatively by people misunderstanding what's possible in the time that we have before us. So, I, we've, we've had a memo in this, in a form earlier, I just would want to make sure in the presentation, it's like the, I'm just a bill, I'm only a bill, like, we go through the steps, the timing, so people have some realistic understanding of what their vote means, and don't think, okay, now where, where's the ballot, why can't I vote, I'm not going to go to town meeting?
Well, just a data point on that, I met with Jim R. Sierra and Anita Tonakar Nguyen, who was his assistant now, or at least was at that time anyway.
Still is.
Some, I'd say a few months ago, about this very topic, to find out, so what do you actually have to do specifically to get a change done? They didn't know, and they committed that they were going to go off and find out the steps and get back to me, which they never did. So, I don't feel personally capable of tracking the things with the whole system myself, so, I think, I certainly wouldn't want to give anyone the illusion that it's easy, either now or at the town meeting, nor do I think any of the people that I've been in communication with think it's easy. But most people, when they think about doing something at the state level, give up. They say, oh, well, that's the state, you know, forget it. And, you know, I just don't think that. I think, I think some of these things need to be changed, and...
Hey, I understand your point, and I understand why it would be valuable to, to do what you're talking about, I would actually like that outcome, I just want to make sure people have a realistic understanding of, of what's likely to happen, and it doesn't negatively affect our ability to get participation.
It just, it seems to me that the hybrid approach, while more difficult to get through the state, probably is solvable with technology eventually, if not very soon. I, I struggled with the first idea that we'd have a ballot vote, because if town meeting were hypothetically to approve a budget, and the ballot says no to the budget, the town's got no budget, you have to go back to town meeting, not knowing what that right number should be. So I, I think some articles, you're right, would work well at the ballot box, some of them are going to be, I think, fatal to town operations, so we need to think about how, how that would work.
I think there are pros and cons with pretty much any approach that you might want to take. The only thing which I do think is that we could find some way to implement things that would not necessarily be perfect, but would be a lot better than it is today. I'd, just to give you an example of the last, the last meeting, in, in the town meeting, a lot of people attended, what, 3,000 people or something, a large number of people attended, and supported the, the override budget. And the subsequent vote at the polls had more than twice as many people voting, and resonantly defeated that. So it seems to me that if you let people vote who could get to the polls but couldn't get to a town meeting, you might have some decisions that were significantly different from what the ones that we get at the town meeting.
But that's a great, that's a great example, though, because we actually, because of that, we had two budgets, there was the override budget that town meeting passed, and the fail-safe if it didn't pass, so that's why, that's the risk of going to the, to the ballot box with the budget is, you know, what is that right number that passes? In that case, we had two, but if you didn't, you know, have an override, you would not know that you had a problem necessarily.
Yeah, I, I understand, actually, when I first presented this, this, the Select Board, Don Siriani brought up that very question. You were probably here at the time.
Yeah, I was, yeah, he was Andrew C.
Right, Andrew was here, and, you know, I think there are solutions, I think that there are ways that you can, you can specify that some things actually need to be dealt with in person at the town meeting. For example, amendments, you can't make amendments, you know, at the poll, but on the other hand, you can't have people amend articles to completely wash out the entire intent of them at the town meeting, so that then people at the polls have nothing to vote on. So, so I think you need, there are a lot of things that you need to specify. There may be a handful of articles that would have to be resolved at the, the in-person, physical town meeting. I, I actually, following up that Don Siriani question, I went back and I looked through some number of, of previous year's town meetings, and I identified about half a dozen articles, and I thought, well, first of all, this isn't likely to be greatly contentious, and second, they should probably be resolved at the town meeting, because you don't want, like you say, you don't want to wind up without a budget. But it's not that many, number one, and number two, I think some of the issues that are the most contentious and of most interest to people are not issues that need to be, you know, solved right at the town meeting. I think a lot of those issues are issues that could be addressed by a subsequent vote at the poll, they're not really time critical.
Okay, Andrea, I mean, I, I thank you.
Thank you, Bill, and thank you for bringing this to our attention. You know, one of the things about town meeting that I also think needs to be considered and taken, you know, is that, yes, at times it's messy, yes, at times discussions may go on a little bit too long, but there is often many times, you know, questions that are asked and information that comes out at town meeting that you wouldn't be able to hear or learn if you were just going to the poll to vote on a particular article or something. So, I personally at least believe that there is value in town meeting, and there is value in that discussion, and there's value in people going back and forth, even though it is messy, I agree, but you know, democracy is messy, it's just the way it is. That being said, I also want to find ways to make sure that everybody who wants to participate in town meeting has the ability and the option to do that, and to find ways to do that. And it seems to me, you know, from a technological point of view, a hybrid meeting is, is the way to really foster that, both allowing for that kind of discussion at town meeting, and for as many people to participate as possible who can't attend for whatever reason, that they are unable to, to be there or to spend an entire day there. So, there are, you know, two forces here that I think we need to, you know, balance and bring into, you know, and into merge, merging, and one is recognizing the value of town meeting, and at the same time recognizing how to make it more accessible for people.
Well, let me just respond to that. I, first of all, there's nothing in this petition that says you wouldn't have a town meeting in person. So you could have that meeting, anybody who wanted to go, anybody who thought they were undecided about an issue, and that they could learn something by being there, could go. People also can watch the town meeting on Westford Cat, so you can easily find out, you know, what the discussion is, and if you have questions, and you, you aren't present, maybe your questions are answered then. But I think there's a huge percentage of people who know how they're going to vote, and they're just at the meeting just to get to the vote, and they don't really need to hear all this other stuff, nor do they need to sit in the big room, you know, with all the people, which...
I guess I would respond to that by saying in response to that, that the majority of people know how to vote, there are a lot of people that aren't going to vote, who don't know how they're going to vote, and to simply say that everybody comes to town meeting knowing how they're going to vote disenfranchises those folks who may not be able to get to town meeting.
Nothing in this would prohibit people from coming to town meeting if they want.
I'm not saying that it will, and all I'm saying is that there is a value to having a town meeting, and there is a value to having, as, as, making it as accessible to folks as possible, and I think that's what we're trying to do here.
Yeah, the, the obstacle at the moment is having to be physically present at the town meeting.
Mm-hmm.
You know, I mean, that is the obstacle right there, and there are a lot of reasons, and as I mentioned in the presentation, a couple of ones which have come up newly. Some of these came up, many issues came up in the 1997 Mass Moderators Report, when they looked into how they're going to increase attendance at town meeting, which Ellen Hardy, who's somewhere here, kindly showed me back in 2015. So a lot of those are the same issues, but the couple of new issues are, which I think are important, are, one is, we did just have the COVID epidemic, and there are a lot of people still who are not at all enthusiastic about being in a big room with a lot of people, breathing the same air, and exposing themselves to who knows what, and particularly a lot of older people. You know, so those people, you know, they can come, but there may be a pretty big obstacle to getting them to come. And the, the second thing is, as people in this room certainly know, because they were in the meetings, some of the recent meetings have been pretty contentious, pretty aggressive, pretty loud, and pretty unpleasant to be at. And I have spoken to people who have talked to me, women in particular, who have gone to the back of a room with their kids to be near the door in case they had to make a hasty exit, and, and any number of people who've been afraid to be in that room. That's not a good thing to have in the way of people voting, in my view. Anybody who wants to go can go.
Yeah, so this is on the warrant, all we're deciding tonight is...
If you want to recommend or not recommend.
Right, okay.
Well, yeah, but you, then, then Josh, Josh wants to...
Oh, sorry, Doc, yeah. I almost don't know what to say, I mean...
No, you don't have, I haven't figured it out, but you were, you were kind of, you know...
Well, you know, I'm just trying to visualize how this is going to look, or how this is going to happen. And, you know, you had the hybrid meeting, and you have 200 people at the, at the town meeting, and then you have 2,000 on hybrid, how are you going to manage that? And, so I'm just concerned by just the mechanics of it. I think the principle is fine, trying to get more people at town meeting, get more people involved, but I think the mechanics of this are just going to, you know, I don't think it'll work.
I think, in my view, which is not necessarily shared by all the 100 odd people on the website, in my view, the hybrid meeting and the remote participation would be difficult for a number of reasons, and, and you mentioned one of them, how are you going to have a meeting with 2,000 people on Zoom? You know, it's, it's not necessarily going to be the easiest thing. You can have people listening the same way they would today, but they can listen on Westford Cat. You know, so, so I lean towards the, the, holding the meeting and then having a paper ballot, which, as I said, I think is a relative snap to implement, I, I don't think it's that hard to implement, and...
Talk to our time clerk.
Yeah. I'm trying to wait through that ballot.
I, I think in comparison to the amount of effort that's gone into some of these recent town meetings, getting them set up, I, I think it's...
I stand there.
I don't, I mean, maybe you know something I don't know, but, but I don't see what the, what the difficulty is of creating a paper ballot, putting a bunch of warrant issue articles on it, and letting people vote at the poll.
I've had concerns about the hybrid meetings to begin with, because an in-person meeting means a lot. Talking it out, discussing it, and debating it, it means a lot.
That's right.
You lose a lot on a hybrid meeting, and then it depends on how it's controlled, how much time you have, you know, I, I just...
But that's your view, and why should you have your view on everybody else?
Yeah, no, I'm, I'm just saying... Yeah, no, I'm, I'm just saying, that's my view.
Okay, so quick question. Yeah, so I, I, yeah, putting aside the relative merits of each approach, I think there's challenges, as you said, and you've heard from the board on that. But I also would point out that I think you may be putting, um, too much hope maybe in the power of the select board to move this forward. So what I would suggest is certainly do what you're doing. And I think the select board, if we hear from, from town meeting, will, will, will do something. But I, I think in terms of moving the needle with the state representative, like Jim, maybe have the 100 people that have supported this write to Jim and say, hey, Jim, we want to see you take action. You know, if he hears from 100 of his constituents, that might actually weigh a little bit more on him than if he gets a letter from the select board of, you know, Westford. Just my thoughts, you know, so I know that's extra work and you've already done a ton, but just a friendly suggestion.
I have to say, I'm not that optimistic about that. I'm not as optimistic as you are. I think we're better off having people in the town who work on it. And, and you're the people who are the responsible directors.
I want to get, my one observation that to me is a real problem is that last sentence. The way lots of such a works, you propose bills, they go through a process, they're heard or they're, or they're tabled or whatever. That's sort of monthly news item. That's going to be, uh, perhaps some annual news item. So at a minimum, that would, to me, that could be a friendly amendment on the floor. It's not a big deal. But it's not going to be a monthly progress report. It's going to be an annual or a...
That might be too frequent.
Yeah, I think so. But anyway, Wendy.
Wendy Glode, 16 Pleasant Street. I'm the Secretary for the Commission on Disability. And Bill, I'd encourage you to listen to our past meetings and attend our future ones. We have done a lot of talking about accessibility, working with Mike Edwards, Assistant Town Manager, on trying to actually make, uh, town meetings more accessible. And we have implemented mask required sections which are cordoned off separately. We have hearing, um, assistance devices. We have, um, other, other items in place. I don't want to go take everybody's time with all the details. And we are also keeping close eye on a couple of towns that have gone, are going through the, the legwork for Westford in, in terms of they, they mimic our exact town structure. And our, our viewpoint on commission on disability is to keep, we're, we keep that on our agenda every month to see where those bills are at. So come, come listen to our meetings and you'll get some updates. We'll do the legwork for you. But, but we figured, we, we talked it out a lot in, in terms of making it more accessible. We agree with you. It needs to be there. Our estimates for the infrastructure to be built for a hybrid meeting where the folks can be correctly validated is somewhere in the five to 10 year range and it's going to cost somebody a lot of money. I don't know who's, who's gonna, um, if the state is going to be able to foot that bill. It is something that is, is definitely in the works and of interest. Just our commission on disability is thought that our best use of our time and, and I think we take some of the, the load and we provide guidance to select board as, as our, um, function in the town to do that work and to try to make those things accessible. So I'd like to, um, have a ongoing chat with you as we move forward, regardless of how this turns out.
Sure.
Okay.
I think that's useful. And I'm aware of the stuff you're doing, so I think it's useful.
Any more, any more comments from the audience? Okay, Kristen?
I just have one more thing that I want to add and it's related to Tom's discussion of this is going to take time, right? And it's not just going to roll out. If this ever were to be enacted by the state legislature, it would then have to come back to our town meeting to vote in favor of this and then we would be implementing forward. So it's just one additional step that residents may not understand just at this point in time. So I just wanted to bring that up in the timeline process.
Okay, so, so basically, we have the presentation and we also have Article 10 and an extra agenda item. So is there a, will the board detain our, our position on Article 10 now? Or, yes?
I guess, so this fits in a category of things we've seen before us before, which is the nature of this is to advise us to do something. And so in the past, we've often taken the position that we're open to, to listening to what the people are willing to direct us. But I guess, I don't know if I want to take a position on telling the people in the meeting what they should direct us to do. So to me, this fits in the category of, of things that in the past we've not taken a position on because the very nature of it is to receive input, not to tell people what input they should give us.
That's, that's fair.
I'd agree with him about that, yeah.
Okay, so I would say the, the, there is no motion basically, or there is a motion to just take a position, which means there's, there is no motion. So, um, so we'll, we'll listen, I guess, to town meeting, Bill, and see where that discussion goes. We don't, we will not decide for or against it. We'll listen.
Right, right.
But it's a, it's a good, it's a good conversation and I look forward to having a bigger one at town meeting. So thank you.
Okay. Thank you for, for listening to me.
Okay.
And more to follow.
So we, so we can take positions. We get, we've got, I think five other items here to take positions on, um, most of them dealing with zoning. We, I think we've, um, got a report from Kristen on what's planning board or what it decided last night.
Yes. So if I could take two minutes of your time just to go through town meeting logistics so that members of the audience and people at home understand what we're going to be doing. This year, special town meeting is on October 21st, which is a Monday. It starts at 7:00 PM at Westford Academy. Check-in begins at 5:30 PM. We will be filling the gymnasium first, then the performing arts center, then if necessary, the cafeteria, and then the auxiliary gym. We have 2,700 clickers. IT has programmed all of those clickers to work in all four rooms. We have one moderator and three assistant moderators for each room and will be testing the audio visual over the next two weeks, that there will be, uh, four-way communication between all of those rooms and it will be also, um, picked up by WCAT for those who are watching at home. We have off-site parking at Abbott, Cristofoli and Robinson School with continuous shuttles. We do ask people to carpool if possible. We also do have the police, fire and DPW working on lighting and, and getting people into the building safely from their various parking spots. The COA is providing free transportation, so please sign up in the next two weeks with the council on aging, free childcare with the recreation department. So again, please sign up within the next two weeks. If you do need an ADA requirement, as Wendy alluded to earlier, uh, those requests are due tomorrow to accessibility@westfordma.gov and we can work with you on that. As we stated, there are 10 articles on the warrant. The postcards for the warrant will be mailed to every household this Friday, so I would anticipate you see them in your mailbox Saturday or Monday of next week. And also the League of Women Voters is holding their town meeting preview on Thursday, October 16th via Zoom, so you can sign up for that link on their website. So I think that is all the logistics, if I can recall. But our teams are working very diligently to make sure that the experience is the best it can be for town meeting.
16th to 17th.
Thursday is the 17th?
Yes.
Yes, and I, thank you for correction, Thursday, the 17th. So before you this evening, there are Articles 1, 2, 3, 4, and 9 that you have not taken a position on, so I'm happy to go through each one individually if you'd like me to or you can take it however you wish, Mr. Chair.
I just want to hear, you know, the planning board met recently and we gave Jeff that off. I think you've got the information on that, so...
So Article 1 is to amend the zoning bylaw to define and regulate firearms businesses and related terms. The planning board voted to recommend that article several meetings ago. We decided to hold off on that this evening to just do zoning the entire time. Article 2 is to amend the zoning bylaw to define, update, or regulate additional uses and to update additional allowances for contractors, yard, general service establishments, business or professional offices, medical offices, brew pubs, breweries, distilleries, or wineries, restaurants, and massage establishments. The planning board recommended that yesterday evening in their meeting. Article 3, amend the zoning bylaw to establish and/or modify parking requirements for several uses. Those several uses are the ones related to Article 2 because those are currently not regulated in our zoning bylaw. The planning board voted to recommend Article 3. And then Article 4, amend the zoning bylaw relative to the use of temporary trailers. To achieve consistency with Mass General Law, Chapter 40A, Section 3, the planning board voted to recommend Article 4 as well.
And so were 2, 3, and 4, were those 5-0 votes?
Yes, they were.
So, um, do you want to take 1, 2, 3, 4 together or 1 separately? Do, you separate, separately, so...
You should take them all separately.
Okay, so that's, um, Article 1. Is there a motion to recommend or not recommend or discussion in general?
Motion to recommend.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Article 2?
I'll make a motion to recommend.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Article 3?
Move to recommend.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. And Article 4?
Move to recommend.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Then Article 9?
Sure, so we just held Article 9 to get you some more information that is in the packet as well as on the town meeting webpage, um, to authorize the select board to acquire by gift two vacant parcels of land off Howard Road and one vacant parcel of land off Kersey Circle for general municipal purposes.
Can I vote on this since I live on Kersey Circle?
If you don't have any financial interest, so it's a gift, so I believe that you...
I don't have any financial interest.
As long as you disclose that, yes, you can vote on.
Okay.
Is there a motion to recommend?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All in the business, request to approve the presidential election warrant. Lori's not here, I presume you saw it in our packets.
Move to, oh, do you want to do them separately or...
Anything else to add to that question?
I don't have anything else to add. I do have, um, five signature pages for you to take care of at the end of the meeting.
So is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Request from the Cultural Council to appoint Francis McDermott and Lena Prabhu Dzey to full-time membership seats for terms expiring June 30th, 2026, and June 30th, 2027 respectively. And what we're at is to vote to appoint Valerie Young as school committee rep to the Reverend and School Building Committee.
Can we just modify that in, in, as replacement for Tom Laflamme, just so we, people know that we don't have two schools?
Yes, because in fact, we had made a mistake at the last meeting and appointed the wrong person, so, um, apologize to Valerie, but is there motion to approve both 1 in, both 2 in?
And we also have Francis and Lena on the line, just in case you have any questions for them. We also prepared the, the memo that you've been requesting related to the background information on this.
I'll move to approve the appointments.
Is there a second?
Second.
Either one of you want to speak to your, well, this is, you don't have to, just give you the option to say a couple of words if you want to. Okay, um, so all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, yes. And then discuss correspondence to MPG Corp. doing business as Rapid Refill regarding the request from the ABCC to uphold a three-day license suspension for a December 21st, 2022 incident. The rest of the state moves slowly. Bill, if you're listening to, to us, and Greg is here to speak to this, if any, any Basically, it was in our packets and for those of you who did not perhaps read that, the state basically affirmed our decision in terms of the suspension, which means that we need to pick, I think, the three dates.
So, so we also have Megan Jacobs, who's from Rapid Refill on the line. I am going to promote her. So again, the decision did uphold the select boards. Um, I, I want to let Greg just speak to what the board can decide upon or can notice to Rapid Refill this evening before you make any decisions. So Greg, go right ahead.
Uh, thank you. So, yes, this matter arises out of a decision made by the board on February 22nd, 2023, finding that a representative of Rapid Refill had violated the terms of Rapid Refill's license by selling alcoholic beverages to a minor. Rapid Refill appealed that to the ADCC, um, which held a hearing in April of 2023. And then finally, on September 30th of this year, the ADCC upheld, um, the board's decision to impose a three-day suspension as a result of the violation. So at this juncture, um, the board's decision is now final and, um, the board can establish, um, that the three-day suspension going into effect, it can either, um, allow the applicant to choose the three days that they're going to serve or, um, the board can decide that it's going to choose, um, the three days. But either way, once it's decided what those three days are, then the, um, the licensee will be required to, um, you know, lock up all alcoholic beverages on those three days and physically turn in their license.
So, so Greg, just to be complete, is there, is there an option for the, for, for Rapid Refill to appeal?
So there, there is, there is an option for further appeal, um, to the Superior Court, um, which appeal time is still running. However, um, once the ADCC makes a decision, um, there is no automatic day of the board's decision, which means that the board's decision goes into effect unless the applicant files a motion with the Superior Court asking that the board's decision be stayed while that further appeal takes place.
Thank you. Just want to be clear. So I guess, I mean, if, I'd love to hear, should we hear from Rapid Refill? I guess, I, I feel that they're on the, on the phone, we should, you know, get their opinion.
You're on mute.
You're on mute. Thank you, guys. Good evening. Uh, my name is Megan Jacobs for Rapid Refill. I'm the VP of Retail Operations for the organization. Uh, we did receive the appeal. And what we are looking to do tonight is to ask the board for leniency. In reading the appeal, um, it does say, um, that depending on the circumstances of the incident, uh, the board could, um, could decide to, to not uphold that three-day suspension. And what we're asking for is instead, uh, a warning from the board. Uh, we have not had a single violation for any age-restricted products, uh, before or since the, the incident. Um, we have since the violation have put further technology that would prevent the circumstances that happened back in 2022 from happening further. Um, we are now requiring that every ID for age-restricted products, so includes tobacco, cigarettes, beer, or wine, is scanned through our point-of-sale system. Um, so the incident that we had where the clerk manually entered the birth date off of the ID, which matched the person's name, first and last, and, and, and picture, was accurate, but it was not a valid ID. Um, and so we, we also consider ourselves a community partner with the town of Westford, been doing business with you guys for a long time and are just asking for early warning instead of a three-day suspension.
Okay, thank you. I'll bet up for discussion, Chris's hand is up slowly.
Yeah, I have a question. So if you were allowed to pick the three days to serve your suspension, what would be the financial impact to your operations as a result of not being able to sell alcohol for those three days?
Yeah, that would be a significant hardship, uh, for us. So financially speaking, we're probably talking for a three-day suspension, probably anywhere from, depending on the day of the week, I would say 20,000 to 30,000 dollars in revenue.
On a Monday?
Yeah, on a, uh, I don't buy that.
I'm sorry, is that it again?
Well, I mean, I'm just thinking that there's, there's, I'm sure peak sales on Thursday, Friday, Saturday, but Monday is usually most, in past experience with other establishments, Monday's been a day chosen because it typically is a very quiet day, um, for the business.
And, and the other thing, and the other thing that we've done is we've not required it to be three days in a row and that we have permitted in working with the establishment to set the days either a week or two weeks apart so that you don't have a, a serious impact. You know... You know, I was on the board two years ago when this happened. And, you know, you folks asked for leniency at that point and asked for a warning at that point as well and made your arguments. And the board at that time, you know, recognized that it was a first offense and recognized that you indeed were going to put in the scanner and additional ways to make sure that this didn't happen again. And I'm very pleased to hear that you've done that. But the fact of the matter is you did have a violation and it's always been the policy of this board, when there's been a violation, that we have imposed the penalty. And so while I understand it'll be a financial impact, it's also been two years since you had this violation. And so I am happy to work with you to pick the three days for the violation, for the susp, I'm sorry, for the suspension. But it's certainly my position that you should serve the three-day suspension.
Any other, Tom?
Yeah, I would agree. So I'm, my next question's sort of procedural. I'm trying to remember, is that something that we ask the people affected to work out with town manager?
Yeah, in fact.
It doesn't need to be three consecutive days, I think is typically what we've done for the, for the first violation.
To the point of leniency, that's kind of how we handle leniency is that we let you pick the three days that are least impactful on a first offense. So yeah, you work with the town manager typically to pick those three days, which usually are, Monday is a couple of weeks apart kind of thing, but that's to work out with, between you and the town manager's office. John, anything you want to add?
I was just going to say that we need to specify a period of time over which those three days would be taken, as far as, next month?
Like within a certain time, like within the next three months, six months, month, whatever it is.
I mean.
Well, I, certainly, I mean, I think you probably want to get it done before Thanksgiving, Christmas, New Year's, right? So my, but that's, that's just my opinion. I'm not in the business, so.
So maybe three, three days that are worked out with the town manager don't need to be contiguous between now and the end of the calendar year.
Yeah, that's what I would say.
So I think we need a motion to that effect.
I will move that.
And is there a second?
Second.
Okay, so all in favor?
Aye.
So, so thank you, Greg. Thank you, Megan.
We'll issue a formal letter to Rapid Refill with that direction.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next review and discuss the MBTA Communities Multifamily Housing Advisory Committee Disbandment. So I think you saw the memo. We owe them a debt of gratitude for a phenomenal job.
Thank you.
And recognize why the state, in case you didn't see that last week, so yeah, very, very good job, but I think we can let them have the rest of their lives off from this committee and put them on different ones to go forward.
We had a good committee, a great committee. The heavy lifting was done by Jeffrey and his, his crew and, and the town, so.
So is there a question to disband with gratitude?
I will move to, with, with great appreciation and thanks, I will move to disband the MBTA Communities Multifamily Housing Advisory Committee.
MAC.
Otherwise known as MAC.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
What are your thoughts on updates?
I have a brief update. So the Parker Rec Commission met last night. One of the things that we've been doing is a deep financial analysis of the programming. We've broken it into three categories, waterfront operations, in-house programming, so that's the after-school program and some of the summer programming that they offer, flag football, and then vendor-led programming. So the waterfront analysis was presented for fiscal year '24, showed that we are losing quite a bit of money. One of the topics under consideration was the idea of implementing a fee for residents. And the commission was interested in pursuing that. One of our first asks would be to have a community, community input, so we'll be asking the town manager's office to coordinate that with us to have, you know, a town-wide notification go out, asking residents to come to the next Parker Rec Commission meeting, which would be typically, we hold that the first Monday of the month, so that we can get public input as part of the process and then we'll iterate from there. So I just want to let this board know that that action was under, you know, consideration.
Good, thanks. Any others? Okay, Kristen?
Sure. So the first is we wanted to update the board on a potential school lighting project coordination and partnership with National Grid. So I'm going to turn that over to Mike to give a very brief update of what we're looking at.
Yeah, it'll be pretty brief. So we, we've been working pretty hard over the last month to respond to a promo incentive that National Grid put out for some lighting incentives. They typically do this towards the end of the year when they have additional incentives just to kind of clear out their, their account. And we threw together a couple of projects in, in very short order, working with one of their vendors. Just got notified of verbal approval today around 2:00 to do two projects, one at Westford Academy and one at Rita Miller Elementary, for a total of about $525,000 worth of projects. 50% of it would be paid for with incentives. The remaining portion, we would be putting in $88,000 and then financing the remaining part on on-bill repayment over the next three years at a slightly positive cash flow. So basically, the energy savings offset the payment, so it's budget neutral with a little bit of positive cash flow out of it, pretty minimal. We're still waiting on the exact numbers. Total out-of-pocket for us is 88,000. The schools can absorb that within their operating budget and we'll figure out some, some shifting around to allow them to do that. But it's, it was a, it was a lift to get it put together, but we got it, got it put together. It, it's, we, theoretically, it's supposed to be done by the end of the year. It looks like they may give us a little bit of an extension to get that done through March because of the delay in informing us and approving it. But this is when I talked earlier about our overall strategy of kind of chasing incentives and trying to find some creative ways to finance things, this wound up being a really good example of that because we're going to be able to get a little over half a million dollars worth of overall project. Operating savings after it's done through on-bill repayment should be around $50,000, excuse me, $69,000 a year.
Nice.
Of our operating budget.
Very nice, thank you.
0% financing, too.
That is great.
Wow.
Is it also like a quality, safety improvement in terms of what the lighting is doing or is it more or less function neutral but saving money?
Better quality light, actually. And that's, you know, we've seen a number of studies talking about the LED versus the old-school T8s, just generally providing a better environment, especially in, in school spaces, you know, reflectivity off pages, things like that. It's, there's really no downside to doing it. You know, this, these were projects that we kind of plucked out of. The IGA stepped up the quality of the product a little bit and are working under, working with one of National Grid's approved vendors under 25, Chapter 25A, Section 14. So we're, we're hoping to be able to use this mechanism a lot more. We learned a lot putting this together and we're hoping that we can kind of keep chipping away at these projects. But also, we've got to recognize the need to be really nimble with this kind of stuff because this came up and we had to jump on it. We're going to need some tools in the future to be able to do that and take advantage of these, so we'll be bringing you some ideas probably for spring town meeting. Good project, good, good news today.
Great, thank you.
No action required and this can be all on the school side?
It's good.
Like the share.
All right, and then moving on to grants, we're excited that we have three grants that we're asking for acceptance of this evening. One from the Executive Office of Public Safety and Security for the Fiscal Year '25 Municipal Road Safety Program in the amount of $18,656. This is a coordination between DPW and Police Department where we have community education, distribution of pedestrian and bike safety equipment, community organizational items, and enforcement of high-risk areas such as speeding and distracted driving. Then we also have a grant from the Friends of the Bruce Freeman Rail Trail for the rail trail crossing supplies in the amount of $3,640 as requested by the Public Works Department. That's so we can have the materials on hand when one of those crossing signs goes down, that we can as efficiently as possible replace those in kind because we have them on the shelf. So thank you to that organization. And then MIA, our Massachusetts Interlocal Insurance Agency, for fiscal '25 Risk Management Grant in the amount of $9,921 for a variety of items that we use around town for, to reduce our risk related to building management systems. I think, you can explain the.
Yeah, actually, we, we brought the original application to you guys. We changed it a little bit because we were able to get them to pay for a bunch of building sensors, so we took that off of, off of the grant. This is primarily safety equipment for Public Works and to include, I think, we've got a gas meter for confined space entry, we've got fall protection gear, and we've got communications gear for them. And then we were getting a thermographic camera for facilities to use to do inspections on buildings for cold air. These are, these were areas that we had high claims in, so we wanted to target those.
Great.
Chris?
So I apologize for this last-minute change, but the grant from the Friends will need to be postponed. There was some procedural issues with awarding that, getting it through board approval, so we'll be bringing that back at another time. So I'm sorry for that, that last-minute change.
And thank you to Kyle for staying extra long because he was here for that.
I know, I'm so sorry.
You couldn't have told him an hour?
I was hoping he's here for another one, too, but I, it did cross my mind, I wasn't going to stop the whole meeting and say, you know, you're here for this.
So is there a motion to approve Grants 1 and 3 with gratitude?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And then contracts, first is for Conica Minolta Business Solutions for our managed print services in the amount of $21,000 as requested by the Technology Department. And then TEC Inc., who's our traffic engineering firm, for traffic signal assessment services in the amount of $24,000 as requested by the Public Works Department.
You know, Kyle has stayed so long, I don't know if he wants to speak to that or not.
I'm prepared to let you approve.
Okay. Well, I'll move to approve the contracts.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion to waive, we're doing correspondence.
Moved in second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, good night, Westford.
Good night, Westford.